Good morning, everybody. The January 9th, 2024 work session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. For those here with us, it is helpful if we limit side conversation in the audience so that we can actually hear up here. So we're gonna, we're gonna get started this morning with a presentation from the Anarundel County Public Schools. Welcome, Mr. Stansky and Ms. Pugh. You have the floor.
There we go. It's better.
Good morning. For the record, Matt Stansky, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Anarundel County Public Schools.
And for the record, I'm Dr. Shannon Pugh. I serve as the Blueprint Implementation Coordinator for the district.
So we're here today to provide you an update on the implementation of the Blueprint of Maryland's Future. We're gonna walk through a presentation and then open the floor to any questions you all may have. Just a reminder of what the blueprint is, it was a groundbreaking piece of legislation that passed in 2020 to transform education in Maryland, to make it a world-class system. This was measured against some of the best-performing systems, not only in the United States, but around the world. And so that legislation was passed in 2020, and we're now in the middle of implementation. The outcomes, obviously, were to reduce the opportunity gaps and to eliminate them, and that every student, again, receive a world-class education, and that our graduates can compete globally for jobs and post-secondary work in life, and that, obviously, then with that, the economy of Maryland grows and becomes more robust. And the strategies to do that were really through four mechanisms. First of all, is expansion of early education or pre-kindergarten, and then followed up with college and career supports and pathways. All of that implemented with high-quality teachers and leaders, and that more resources are then invested in schools where they're needed, so that all students could be successful. So I'm turning it over to my colleague to walk us through the pillar one in early childhood education.
Hi. So, expanding early childhood education, I'm gonna take you through just a little bit of those pieces. Just to highlight, here, the law calls for a significant expansion of pre-kindergarten opportunities for our, for our youngest learners, obviously. So this calls for an expansion of four-year-old and three-year-old pre-K throughout the state. I wanted to just spend a second here of just identifying what this actually means. And so the law divides children into tiers based upon different eligibility factors. And so by fiscal year '26, this is definitely a stretch goal, just so everybody knows, all four-year-olds within our county who qualify under Tier One, which is financial eligibility, which is 300% of the federal poverty level, about $80,000. If their families want a seat in pre-K, we will need to provide them a seat in pre-K. And Blueprint ultimately gets to this magic year of 2032, 2033, when everything will be implemented. So by the time we get there, the expectation is that we have seats for all students who are Tier One and Tier Two, if they are four-year-olds, if their families would like one in the county. And then, I apologize, that was for three-year-olds, and then for four-year-olds, all families who would like a seat in pre-K in our communities should have one. In each of the pillars here, we did provide a little bit of information on return on investment. We're not really gonna talk about each one of those in detail in our time today, but it is there, so you can see the research behind what the return on investment is as we invest, in this case, in our pre-kindergarten children. So just a little bit of a snapshot of where Anarundel County is right now. You can see a two-year comparison here. So in fiscal year 2022, we didn't have any three-year-old full-day programs. And then, this year, we actually have 15 seats, and that serves 300 children. There is a legal cap on 20 children per classroom, and then 10 per person. I do wanna go on the record of saying that the teachers who are doing three-year-old pre-K all day long with a room of 20 children are probably the saints in our school system. It's wonderful, exciting to see, but they certainly do have a lot on their hands that way. And you can see the expansion that we've done with four-year-olds. We've gone from 73 classrooms to 103, and you can also see the number of children that we are able to serve within our community there. One of the goals with pre-K is, does this impact kindergarten readiness for our children? And you can see here, this is actually on our current kindergarten children, comparison between if children had an ACPS pre-K and if they did not. And you can see that our current kindergarteners, 22% of them who did, who had an ACPS pre-K on their kindergarten readiness assessment are identified as emerging compared to if they did not have an ACPS pre-K opportunity. So we do feel that, at least so far, the pre-K that we are providing our children, we are seeing a growth. I don't have comparison to previous years on this slide, but we do have that. And that green and that yellow is getting more prominent, and the red is going down for our children. Mr. Stansky?
Yep. All right, I'm gonna... All right. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about investing in teachers and leaders. And again, this is ensuring that every student has a highly effective teacher in front of them. And so what the blueprint does is, obviously, raise the standard of the teaching profession. It rewards, obviously, National Board Certification attainment, and really creates a new pathway for teachers who, you know, traditionally, the only way to sort of grow is to move into the administrative track, assistant principal, principal, where now the blueprint is gonna mandate that we create this new pathway called Teacher Leaders, where you can remain in the classroom for your entirety of your career, but you're also afforded the opportunity to lead and to earn additional compensation, and to really kind of help transform and mentor younger teachers as they grow in the profession as well. So a couple of the requirements here, teacher compensation had to increase by 10% by fiscal '24. We have met and exceeded that requirement. The starting teacher salary, the next one, will have to be statewide at $60,000. How about this? There we go. All right. By fiscal year '27, the teacher salary has to be at $60,000. We are currently at $58,161, so we are fourth in the state in that. We are roughly a 4% COLA away from hitting that $60,000 mark, so I feel like we're on a good trajectory to hit that mark with by fiscal year '27. And then, obviously, teachers who are, who qualify under the definition of teacher, get an additional $10,000 for attaining National Board Certification, plus they get an additional $7,000 if they teach in a, what is a blueprint-identified, low-performing school. And again, why are we investing in this? I think it, one thing to point out here, it does cost us roughly about $11,000 to recruit, hire, and train, and support new teachers. So that turnover is, can be costly for us, and so we believe with the legislation that this will help retain more of our folks, and that therefore we'll have savings as far as what we pay out in turnover costs to hire and train our new teachers. Just to give you an update of where we are with our National Board Certification, we are, you know, a leader in this. We have the second-most National Board teachers in the state, the only jurisdiction that's more is Montgomery County, and they're roughly twice our size. So we had 347 last December. We are still finalizing these numbers, but we now believe we'll have roughly 408, and we have more in the pipeline as we continue to grow. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Pugh, who will talk about pillar three, which is college and career readiness.
Thank you. So I just wanna go and highlight one thing, really, for each grade related to college and career readiness. And so at our, in our primary grades, which is basically kindergarten through grade two, this is where we really focus on the science of reading underneath Blueprint. So all of the, we have just adopted a new curriculum, and other things that are going to go into effect for next year. So that is where we're focusing on a lot of energy there. And Blueprint requires that we identify children who are in grades K through two that, based upon data, we believe might be struggling as they move forward, and to provide very intense interventions in a structure that is no more than for children to any one adult at the time, to really try to make sure that by the time we get to grade three, that any of those, any of those foundational skills that we need our children to have before we get there, that we've actually done a lot of intervention with that. We keep that same model as we move through grades three through five. This is where, in education speak, children go from learning to read to reading to learn. And so really still focusing, though, on any children who might be struggling at that point, to provide them those supports as we move forward. Grade six through eight, so in our middle schools, we, of course, are still progress monitoring our children to see where they are in foundational skills, but this is also where they're really exploring some passions, some loves. And we have a partnership that came from Blueprint, which is with our Workforce Development Corporation. And under law, they are required to provide career coaching to our secondary students in grades six through eight. And so what that looks like right now is that each of our middle schools, we do have someone that they have hired that is in our middle schools, who's helping with bringing in guest speakers, field trips, working with students, working with families on, let's start exploring some career opportunities for our, for our middle school students, so that they're really thinking about what they might wanna do when they go into high school. So we have that as far as our middle school experience for our, for our children there. When we get to ninth and 10th grade, by law, in ninth grade, we're supposed to make sure that any children who are not on track in grade nine, to be college and career-ready for a pathway, that we are providing intensive supports for them as well. Once again, we want children, at the end of their 10th-grade year, to choose a pathway that I'll talk about next here. So we hear a lot about being college and career-ready, and so this is really two definitions. So one of the definitions for being college and career-ready is that children graduate having the skill set to immediately go and be successful in either college or career. But also, within college and career-ready, CCR, this is also an identifier at the, really the end of grade 10, beginning of grade 11, that our children are ready to actually choose a pathway, and really go in-depth of what that might mean for them and their career. So, right now, there is conversation about perhaps changing the metric of how we decide which of our children meet that definition. But as of right now, for literacy, it's a passing score on English 10 MCAP, which is the state assessment. And then mathematics, they have two options there, either the Algebra 1 MCAP, or a similar score on the SAT Math section. But once children have those requisite scores, then we are really focused on helping them choose a pathway that best aligns to what their goals might be. The first one is college pathways, which we have a very expansive Advanced Placement program in Anarundel County and have for quite some time. In this, in Advanced Placement, students can, if their university of choice chooses to acknowledge a passing score or a score of three, four, or five, depending on the university, that they could get college credit. We also have an International Baccalaureate Program at three of our high schools, and then we have Early College Pathway with Anarundel County Community College, that we'll talk about in just a second. Students also might choose, or instead, choose a career pathway. In that pathway, we are helping students ideally earn an industry certification, so by the time that they leave high school, they have some certification that they can immediately be employed in some fashion. So whether that's an HVAC certification, whether that's a certification for some of the nursing skills, early nursing skills that they have, that they leave, that they leave high school with something that they can use to be immediately employable within our, within our community. Also, really focused on apprenticeships, that we'll talk about in just a second, that isn't something we have focused on a lot historically, but going back to, I know that this was one of the major, you know, areas that I know Governor Hogan even really advocated for, was expansion of opportunities for apprenticeships. And then we have a dual pathway. So what if our kids aren't exactly sure what they wanna do yet, and they want a little bit of a mix, or maybe they want, maybe pursue an opportunity in a military career, those things? They can, they can mix and match a little bit here, so they're not deciding and really stuck to something on the first day of 11th grade. They might do a little bit of mixing and matching, maybe a couple AP courses, a couple of things at the community college, and maybe they might be taking some CTE classes. But I wanted to break that down, because I think CCR is sometimes misinterpreted. If our children are not ready for those pathways, meaning they don't have those required scores, we have two requirements. Number one, we have to continue to support them, which, of course, we would've done anyway to help them be successful in that area. But we also have to make sure that they are still exploring those pathways. So it's not like they have to stay and can't think about what those pathways are until they get this magic passing score. But we have to, we have to be really strategic, because there's only so much time within a school day, and how do we help our children there? Go to those points. Lots of different studies around the country about the power of CTE. There's one highlighted there for you. But where are we as far as these metrics? And so this is what we're really excited about. So compared to fiscal year '23, we, this year, have 8,101 students enrolled in at least one AP course. These are unique numbers. It's not counting a child who's enrolled in two AP courses twice. And so we are seeing that increase there. We see a similar increase when you talk about percentages there with International Baccalaureate. And what we're really excited about is that dual enrollment opportunities with the community college. On the next couple of slides, we do let you see that this is really expanding opportunities for students from all different backgrounds. So we have AP, and then an IB slide for you. And then we go on to the community college. I'm gonna talk about just one thing very quick on this one, and that is the number of our students who qualify for free and reduced-price meals, who are taking advantage of dual enrollment. And the reason that this is such a highlight is, we have always paid for their supports at the community college, regardless of Blueprint. And just the fact that we have Blueprint, it's more on the radar, it's being promoted, we have more children and families who are choosing that option. So we're really great, grateful to see that increase. We mentioned the apprenticeship route. Anarundel County has the most number of apprentices, students taking an official apprenticeship in the state. Even though the number 118 is pretty low, there are districts who have two or one. And so we are excited that our local businesses and corporations are providing these opportunities for our students, and that also is a great partnership as well with workforce development, and identifying those businesses within our community who are paying our children to learn on the job. And ideally, those are going to be students that, at the end, can actually have jobs in those same businesses. So we're excited about that piece. So we also have pillar four, which recognizes that some of our, some of our students and some of our programs just cost more money. And so how are we making sure that we have the resources to support the students who need, who need those supports? And so through Blueprint, there's a couple of different things that I wanna highlight. One of them is to really focus on what we call Consortium of Community Supports. And so this is just now launching, so this is the recognition is that, especially in Maryland, we have a lot of agencies and nonprofits, and a lot of things that wanna provide supports to our children in social, emotional, helping with family issues, et cetera. And it's just not really well organized. And so this is just getting started of how can we organize these supports through schools, all schools? So this is for all of our schools, all of our children. And so if there is a need for a social-emotional support at a school, the school district doesn't have that resource, well, we know of an agency that would love to come in and support that. So this is this effort statewide, and then locally, of what are all these great resources that we have? Let's make sure we get them to our families who need them. And in many ways, schools are a great place to do that, regardless of where they are. But there's also, within pillar four, our community schools, so I'm gonna highlight those just a little bit of where we are. I have the very, I'm very fortunate in that I get to facilitate and supervise that program, and I'm very proud of the work that our schools do in that program. So in community schools, the focus is on providing wraparound services to our students and their families, related to anything that might be an in-school or out-of-school barrier to their success. And so what you see on this graphic is a, is a visual of what does it mean to have wraparound services? So in physical health, we expand, there is a full-time medical professional in every single one of our community schools for the whole day. That is not necessarily what happens at all of our schools, we're typically part-time. When we go on to social, emotional, behavioral, this is where we're able to use these funds to hire additional social workers, psychologists, and others to work in specifically the schools identified. Incidentally, this year, we have 23, next year, we'll have 36. They are identified through high concentrations of poverty. I typically don't use that anywhere else. I just say, you have a community schools grant, let's get all excited about that. But also, in here, you can see that two-plus generational support, very strong partnership with a community college, and offering English language classes, GED classes, workforce development classes, so things where families can come into the school and get some of those trainings and supports that they would like to have, and for whatever reason, they just can't take advantage of them right now. And then, in what we really are very familiar with, the academic enrichment piece, and we intentionally use the word enrichment rather than remediation or anything like that, because we believe all of our children need those enrichment opportunities, and so we see drama, we see all types of things that are happening in our schools that, honestly, their resources just weren't there for after-school-type programming. And so this is definitely a love and passion. This, the next one, is just a quick little look at the, just to kinda see how we're using those funds for full-time positions and supports that we have there. I'm not gonna read this piece, but you can just skim through, and hopefully you can find something that is relevant and meaningful to our families and our children, that schools are offering here through both programming during the day, and then after school in evenings, and even on weekends. Mr. Stansky?
Yep. All right. I'm gonna close this out with pillar five, which is accountability. And this is really, you know, the legislation specifically created the Accountability Implementation Board, which has essentially plenary authority to implement the blueprint and to mandate or ensure effective implementation of the legislation. There's really two main points. They have created expert review teams here at MSD that actually go into schools to review instruction and programming and provide feedback. But the biggest one, and one near and dearest to me, obviously, is the new budgeting and fiscal reporting requirements that we'll, that we will walk through. So what we're all used to is, there's state formulas that run based on enrollment. The district gets funding from those formulas. The county has their maintenance-of-effort requirement. I come and ask you for more money than maintenance-of-effort, you guys have been always more than generous. But then that typically used to go into a big pot, right, in the general fund, and we would budget it based on the 14 state categories. Well, really, starting next fiscal year, there's gonna be, you know, new requirements around these programs that are, that are formula-driven at the state, and they're going to require county matches, and will then really sort of now determine a little bit more, a little more restrictive, how money is spent and where money goes. And so what you have in front of you, these are the formulas that require those requirements, both from the state and a county match to it. And so this is, this is how, you know, I described how it currently works, but this is how now it's gonna work, which is, the formulas are run, they're wealth-equalized, meaning the wealthier counties have to pay more than the poorer counties. It goes in, but then the district has to then report on each one of these blueprint programs at the school level, to ensure that both the money has been allocated to the schools that generated the money, and spent at those schools that generated the money. Most of the requirement is that we pay at least 75% of the money that the school generated is actually spent and allocated at the school. But what happens, that doesn't mean maintenance-of-effort goes away. So what happens now is, the law requires that we add up all the local match components, that gets us to a number, then we calculate the maintenance-of-effort, that gets us to a number, and then whichever is higher, that's what the county is obligated to give. We are still currently a maintenance-of-effort county, and probably will be for the remainder of the decade. I think the, you know, latest projection, at least I was thinking, was probably not till FY '29 or FY '30 will we get to a local share, where the local share exceeds the maintenance-of-effort. But we do have, like, probably four or five counties now that where the local share is already exceeding maintenance-of-effort, meaning that county money has to go into these programs outlined in the Blueprint law, and be spent at the schools that they are, that they're generated at. So I like this chart, because it kind of depicts what wealth equalization actually means, and so this is a great example. You tend to hear a lot of folks say, oh, the state is providing $10,000 for National Board Certified Teachers. Well, that's actually not true. The state mandates that we pay $10,000, National Board Certification, but depending on the relative wealth of your jurisdiction, is what they actually contribute. So you can see in this chart, for Anarundel County, the state is only contributing roughly $3,500 towards that, towards that requirement, meaning that the county government is actually chipping in the other $6,500 to meet that $10,000 requirement. You can see on this chart, we're considered the sixth wealthiest jurisdiction in the state compared to our colleagues. And just a reminder of how they determine wealth, which is your property tax base, your income tax base divided by the number of students you serve in the district, and that gets, that gets you to a number. Usually, when someone looks at this chart, there is like, wait a minute, Howard County is less wealthy than Anarundel County, and according to the state funding formulas, the answer to that is yes. So what does this money-falling a student actually mean? How does it look? I like this chart, because it really kinda lays it out, right? So it means more students who, more funding going to students who need the money, right? And so we're just taking two random elementary schools with similar overall enrollments, right? So 443 students to the school on the left, 433 students at the school on the right. But demographics within those schools vary greatly. And so the school on the left is, has, you know, students who qualify for farms at a lower level, same with low English language learner population and special education, whereas the school on the right has a high concentration of students who qualify for free and reduced-price meals, a high English learner population. And you can see, the school with actually less, fewer, 11 fewer students, actually, their budget almost doubles the budget of School A. And so this is, this is the Blueprint in a slide. This is what the intent of the legislation is. This is, I will tell you, this is at 100%, so reminder that most of this funding is a 75% requirement, but at 100% requirement, School B would get $9.8 million, where School A would get $4.9 million. Why does that happen, right? So again, there's a wide variance in individual-per-pupil funding within each school, right? So school, every student, K through 12, in this fiscal year, generated $8,642. But if, so you can see Student B qualified for free and reduced-price meals, so that ups that funding up to $16,161. And then you have Student C, which we do have a fair amount of students who qualify for all four of these, would receive $32,754 per student. So you can see, even within each individual student, the variation of funding, it varies greatly. And so depending on the makeup of an individual school, and how, what type of students you're serving, will vary the type of funding you'll receive moving forward under the Blueprint. I do wanna end with, you know, just, you know, I know it probably feels like we're always coming over here with our hands out, but I do want you to know that Dr. Bedell and the board have really stressed on reallocating of our existing resources to help with the Blueprint. We obviously, Dr. Pugh talked a little bit about the requirements in pillar two around more time for teachers to develop their craft, and one of the issues we had, obviously, with planning time, is we did not have our EEE program in all of our elementary clusters. Dr. Bedell just said, you know, enough is enough, we gotta get this done. And so we went, we went to the drawing board, we looked at central office positions, we looked at existing school-based positions, and we were able to, this year, add this program to the rest of the remaining clusters. And so I've been told to tell, give you the message that we are continuing to look at our existing budgets. So we're not, you know, we understand we have a big ask this year, but we are gonna continue to look at existing budgets to help meet the requirements of the Blueprint, because there's, we're not gonna be able to meet all these requirements just getting additional dollars. It's just not, there's just not enough money out there at the state or the county level, and so we're committed to continue to look within our existing spend to reallocate resources to serve students better and to meet the needs of the Blueprint. So with that, Madam Chair, concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you. That was excellent. It definitely added a little more detail to some of the questions that came out at the Legislative Breakfast yesterday. I'm not sure everybody knows that Mr. Stansky is an award-winning public servant, and is known around the state as the expert on Blueprint, as is Dr. Pugh. So we're very fortunate to have both of you. So we're very fortunate to have both of you in our school system. So thank you for all that you do. This is complicated, so I want to make sure my colleagues have time for questions. I see Ms. Radvian has a question. I know I have a few, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jan. Thank you for the presentation. It's good to, you know, kind of see where things are at and what the challenges are. So one of the things I, this is always, I'm not, you know, obviously you guys know I'm a teacher. I don't have early childhood experience though, so I'm always trying to learn more about it and how that piece works. So, you know, I think hopefully it's obvious that most people support and I support the expansion of pre-K three and pre-K four. But one of the things I'm really continually struggling with is the, the concept of kindergarten readiness, that we are taking, you know, students that have, you know, we don't always know the background of students, you know, especially right now when we, we aren't in a position to offer it to every student in our county that's, you know, three year old or four year old. So we have this idea of kindergarten readiness and from the get go, from, you know, within the first month or two of a student starting school, we've identified them as needing remediation. And that to me is just counter to everything I've learned about education in terms of like you want to meet students where they are. And I don't know what the impact of that is psychologically. I mean, kids maybe don't really know, but kids pick up pretty quickly and families know. And, and is there a way that we can start kindergarten without having to call, you know, students? I mean, I know we give them nice labels. It's like, you can tell me it's like approaching or demonstrating. I don't remember what the lowest level is, but to start out with a group of students that you already said, you know, before they've even walked in the door, or basically as they've walked in the door, they're behind. And why don't we write a curriculum that addresses, especially right now, you know, when we have such a large percentage of our students who aren't, you know, they're either emerging or approaching and not demonstrating? Why doesn't our curriculum reflect that? Why don't we, instead of doing remediation, why don't we start all of the kids sort of at the beginning of, of what we need?
Sure. So that's a great question. And this is an opportunity to, first of all, talk about what does it mean to be kindergarten ready? So the KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment assesses children primarily in four categories. One of them is motor development. Can children actually pick up a pencil? Can children actually use the scissors, things like that? And, and if they can't do that, the teacher just needs to know they can't do that. And to address, and I know you were thinking about something else, but just to address that reality is years ago, we've started to figure out that our children were coming to kindergarten and they didn't have the hand motor development skills to do things like that with basic writing instruments. And so we actually rewrote our kindergarten physical education curriculum to have a lot more opportunities for our children to grab things and balls like that, to actually address that. So it wasn't like, oh, they are behind in this. It really guided how we wrote our curriculum in that, in that way. Other pieces of KRA assessment has to do with social skills with how, you know, can, can you be nice to people? Do you say please? Do you say thank you? Do you know how to do those things? And that's not to say that children are behind in that skill, but as a teacher, I then can really look at my classroom, find more opportunities for children to work together in small groups. And, you know, friends, this is how we talk nice to each other. Those types of things are, are those pieces. But I think you were really talking about the reading and the math part of those, of KRA, of kindergarten readiness. And so when we talk about looking at children, whether or not they are kindergarten ready in something like reading, we're not asking them if they can read. What we're asking them is, I believe there's a total of 18 letters. We want them to know that there are letters and they make sounds. And some of those letters might be in my name and I can make some of those sounds in my name, that we're not expecting any child at the age of five to be, to demonstrate the ability to read. It's more of the idea of like, okay, what do I do with all these letters? And in many cases, I think our adoption of the kindergarten or science of reading curriculum that'll roll out next year really does highlight that a little bit more at the elementary level and does start them at, we assume that you're, you might know some letters, but we're not actually saying, oh, well, you're behind because you don't know the difference between a B or a D. That, that's not that, that piece there. And same idea with math. We're not asking kids to calculate anything. We're asking kids to understand, there is this two and that means something. Or, okay, we can count. It's not necessarily they have to demonstrate that they can count one through 50, but they know that there's an order of things. And so the questions on the KRA, which I'm not an expert on the actual assessment piece, but a lot of them are visual. A lot of them are teachers actually asking kids questions and then to get to know their children, which I also think I've been a really big advocate to making sure that the classroom teacher is administering the KRA. I know that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. We provide substitute days, et cetera. But just that one-on-one time as the teacher with their brand new child who is, you know, five years old and really having an opportunity for just some of those, just talking to their children. So I think that that's peace. So we do have a new math curriculum that rolled out this year that also I think focuses on those, those pieces. Blueprint also I mentioned focuses when we talk about remediation on small groups. And so think about small group rotations. And so it's not like I'm pulled out for whatever. When I get these four children, they are going to have a different type of learning experience than when I get these other four children, when I get these other four children. So really trying to specialize the supports for the children that way. So I, I, I don't know if that entirely answered the question, but we certainly are working on making sure that curriculum responds to the needs that we know our children are going to have when they come in, rather than saying, oh, you're behind. Here you are. It's much more about what do we need to change? And I think the PE example is a perfect example of, we can't assume kids have those dexterity skills when they come in.
I actually think that is the best explanation of it that I've heard and I've asked this question a lot, so thank you. I guess I wish we would just called it something else, you know, instead of readiness. Readiness makes it sound like you should have these certain, I mean, and I think like, you know, back in the day, and I know that's the worst expression for teachers trying to do modern things, but it was basically like, are you potty trained? And are you potty trained? That's it. And so I wish, I just wish we could call it something else like, hey, these are the things that we want you to be able to do by the end of kindergarten. You come in the door, you can check off already a lot of those boxes, but let's focus on, you know, the boxes that, you know, that not all kids are checking off. And maybe that's really what I'm stuck with. I just wish it would maybe even just have a different name. And, you know, the red and yellow green bands, you know, that sort of, I guess that irks me because it immediately takes kids, and you know that the kids in the red bands are English language learners and children from poverty. And so we're immediately putting them in the red and yellow categories. And I would, you know, wish there were some way that we could not start with those labels. So anyway, that's, thank you for that explanation though. That was actually truly better than what I've heard before, so I appreciate it.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Pretty simple question. It triggered when we were, you were talking about the additional $7,000 for the National Board Certified Teachers who are in schools that are identified as low performing. It begged the question in my brain, does ACPS have any identified low performing schools? And who is the person or the entity doing that identification? And how many schools do we have, if we have any?
So I don't have the exact number in front of me, but there's two different metrics for that. The first one is the state does identify using state data. A couple of schools that are required across the state that the district has to identify as low performing. Those schools typically are schools that have other areas of, of growth needed that are identified through other systems. So the state gives us that first list. The state also recognizing that counties are different and there are priorities that we have within a county. We might have schools that we believe need additional support that might not have been the metrics that I, that I said, because those metrics are, is it the lowest 5%? The lowest 5% of schools across the state. So we do have a couple that, that were identified that. So lowest 5% in some student group for, for some area. For example, Phoenix Academy is one of the schools that are identified and there's a lot of special needs there. But also districts are given another list of, these are the schools within your county that you may choose and it's a 10% of the schools based upon the school band. So it's a K through eight and then a nine through 12. So Anarundel County, at least right now, will never have more than one high school on that list because we can't identify. And so the state's only identifying 10% and so we have 13 school and so it goes to that. Then we have additional schools from K through eight. So those are identified the same way. These are the lowest 10% within the district and so you might want to identify those. And so we in many ways can think about getting more experienced teachers there or something else in order to address that. I hope that answered the question. I don't have the exact number in front of me though.
I want to say, yeah, we'll get you the exact number, right? It's probably 10 to 13 maybe.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to touch on slide 10, the pre-K implementation. Obviously we've grown in that arena considerably since 2022. What is, what are the future goals of pre-K? What do those numbers look like? Do we have projections or is this going to be, you know, an annual estimate?
Yeah. So I would say, Ms. Fiedler, you know, our kindergarten cohort is roughly around 6,000. So pre-K is not compulsory, right? So it's a choice. So I'm thinking, you know, right now we're looking probably at 40, 4,500 students possibly by 2032. Right now, the demand, especially in tier one, is in the western part of the county. We're hoping with redistricting, that opens up some more seats over there. Obviously we have to, there's requirements around classrooms for pre-K and so we'll have to spend some capital dollars to convert some, some existing classrooms to pre-K to, to get, to get those, those seats available. Transportation at the moment is a barrier, right? You know, if, you know, we have available seats, say in Annapolis, but the demand is in West County, we're, we're just not, no parent is going to put their four year old or three year old on a bus to go from, say Laurel to Annapolis. And so we have to, we have to really work to get seats available where the demand is. And we are, we're starting to say this to folks, we are going to be looking at our middle schools and our high schools. There's, we have a lot of capacity in our middle schools right now. And, you know, there may just have to be, you know, a point where we're going to have to start converting some of our middle school and high school classrooms to pre-K classrooms. Obviously the blueprint envisioned larger participation from the private sector. We have not seen that participation yet for a variety of reasons. We're hoping that through some tweaks in the legislation and as the per, per student revenue ramps up for pre-K, that, that it will make the business case for the private sector more appealing and that they'll be able to participate because it will, it will, it will consume our capital budget here pretty quickly if we, if we can't get them, some of our private providers to onboard to participate.
I don't see any more lights from, oh.
I'm sorry, I had one more. I hadn't, I was letting everyone take turns.
No, sure. Go ahead.
Okay. This is something I raised at the breakfast yesterday regarding National Board Certification. I know that there are a lot of teachers that really struggle with the idea of going through the National Board Certification, especially if they've been in the career, if they've been in teaching for a good while, because, you know, they've invested significant amount of money and time, either getting their master's degree or doctorate degrees. And there's also a good number of pathways that don't have the option for National Board Certification. I know Mr. Silkworth or President Silkworth mentioned, for example, you know, a teacher of the year who was a German teacher and that there currently is no pathway for National Board Certification for, for German teachers. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if this is something that we can be looking at to say, hey, we could, you know, recognize, I haven't really seen, the only data that I've seen that National Board Certification is a real improvement, is data that is coming from or is supported by the National Board Organization itself. And so, and I don't know if we have comparisons of, you know, how meaningful National Board Certification is compared to say a doctorate degree or a master's degree. And so I know it's, it's, you know, I know that's a state dictate and that's not one that, that is the county, but, you know, the county can be a voice in saying, hey, is this, you know, is this really more valuable than sending someone to an accredited program at one of our, you know, at one of our universities? And so I just, I want to put that out there again for my colleagues and just raise that. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
I think this is my last question. I appreciate you touching on maintenance of effort. That is a question I get regularly. Just for clarification, the silos at the state level, the different silos are remaining the same, but they're just getting more prescriptive in what can be, what the money can be allocated to. Is that correct?
Correct. And so I think some of the, some of the challenges with these programs is they're all listed here. Some, the law is very clear as what the, the money can be used for, right? So I'll look at like concentration of poverty, the last one. That's, the law is clear, it's per wraparound services and they list the 14 wraparound services in the law that you can use the money for. Transitional supplemental instruction, that is strictly K through three tutoring at no more than four to one for reading and math, right? Where I think we're still struggling as a state is sort of the legacy programs and those are really the, the per pupil, the targeted per pupil foundation, comparable wage index, compensatory education, English language learners. Those are, those are holdovers from the bridge to excellence. And so there was a lot more, they were much less restricted under bridge to excellence, right? There was no county match required. We could just use that money through the appropriations process. Now, the law dictates which school gets it and how the, how you get it, but it is still a little unclear as to how it should be spent. And so the, the law prescribes that this manual, I'm going to get really bureaucratic here, this manual that the Maryland State Department of Education produces called the Financial Reporting Manual would be updated to provide that guidance, right? This manual currently tells us how we budget for the 14 state categories, what's allowable, what's not. We were anticipating this to be updated to provide the similar guidance for the blueprint. It has not been updated. And so the 24 of us are, are working with AIB and MSD to try and get some of that guidance out here shortly, because really what that entails, it's, it's a new reporting requirement. So it's, you know, essentially going to be a new account, segment on my account string that I'm going to have to look at existing spending and see which one of these programs it fits in. And so we're going through that exercise now, but I, I can't complete it until we really get a better understanding of what is going to be required. But overall, to your point, yes, instead of having like a bigger general fund now, we now essentially have eight to nine individual grants that we're going to have to monitor by school to ensure that the money is going there and is getting spent.
Thank you for that. May I ask a follow up question? Will this complicate the first transfer that comes to minus fourth quarter transfer?
Absolutely will.
Okay.
Absolutely will.
Thank you.
And you may see transfers in order for us to meet requirements and it could be at specific schools too.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Because we're held accountable to account, not just overall spending at the, each one of those programs, but it's by school.
We're going to be seeing you a lot more, aren't we?
Mr. Smith.
I'm sure, thank you. On slot 41, and this is easy because you might know the answer off the top of your head. Is there in the, the old formula, would it just be the 443 students times 15,000 or 15,000 per student or whatever the number is?
Yeah.
And that's how, that was their funding pre?
Essentially, yeah. It was district wide essentially.
Okay.
Yep.
Do we know for the schools that are, like school A, for example, let's say 443 times, and what was, what was the number? The, the previous number for blueprint?
Oh, it would, you know, yeah, it was about 15,000 a kid, right?
Right. So that'd have been 443, somewhere around like six million, right?
Yep.
So do we know what that, so they would get like six plus million before school A, now they're getting 4.9. What was that million, that delta used for in school A that we're no longer doing at that school?
I mean, it's staffing, right? And so, you know, what we're, you know, again, we have to see what the final rules are going to be and we're going to try to minimize this as much as possible. And we're hearing anecdotally from, from AIB that, Mr. Smith, that, you know, we, they're not going to expect 100% compliance immediately. But, you know, the task that really for us is to ensure that school B gets the resources it needs without. it needs without decimating School A.
Correct.
Right? And so that's, that's going to be a very delicate exercise. I can't sit here and say there won't be any transfers of funding from certain schools, from one school to another, but we're going to try to have, to do our best to minimize that impact wherever possible. But obviously, we want to get School B the resources it's
100%.
desired, but we want to do it in a way that's not, I just, I, we don't want to pit schools.
I just want to consciously know what I'm not doing, because leadership is always about making decisions not to do something to do something else.
Correct.
So I want to know what I'm not doing to enhance another group of students.
Yeah, I mean, more than likely, you, you know, class sizes in School A would probably have to go, if you were to do a straight transfer, right? Class sizes in School A would have to go up to, to meet the requirements in School B.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Rovian.
I think this is my last one. This one is about the triple E program. So I've heard anecdotally great things from, you know, parents and, you know, teachers involved, and obviously, the teachers who get the extra planning are thrilled, because I know that's a huge need for the elementary educators, that they're, you know, that they, they're often with their students the entire day with no break and hardly even time to go to the bathroom, much less plan or grade. But I'm curious if we have, if there is any data that's been collected on the impact of, of the program, you know, on, on, you know, other important metrics, for example.
That's a great question. I would say that we don't probably have any causation, any type of data related to that. I would say that sometimes anecdotal is helpful, so go back to your point of teachers just having more time to plan. So what this does, if you, if you're not aware, is now every teacher has at least one planning period a day, because we divide out the cultural arts, so music, visual arts, physical education, going to the library, and now a triple E. So, so those teachers have time to really plan deliberately within their, their classrooms, not that they weren't doing it before, but they were doing it at 7:30 at night, you know, and on their, on their couch. So it does allow for those pieces. But now that we do have it district-wide, I think maybe a, a good research study might be something that our, our Office of Research might look into. So, great idea. I don't, I don't think we've done any.
We'll look, though.
All right, thank you. And thank you so much for all the great information and data you did bring today. So I didn't want to pick on you, because there was one tiny one that I've just had a question about. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. This was, this was a fantastic start to this conversation. I think we're going to be having this conversation for a long time. It was, I think it was very timely, as we get, start the budget process, budget season, to have you here with us today. I know triple E was a big push for me to get triple E throughout my district. I'm excited that y'all have done it this way. I think it's a great resource for teachers to get that planning period, but it's also really exciting for students, to engage them in a different learning environment for the day and breaks up the day. And I know students are always really looking forward to their triple E class time. So it's, it seems like it's a win-win, but it is certainly something we should probably study, especially as we're looking at having to divvy up school funding in a way and assign special education and ELL and all that kind of stuff. But I really appreciate this conversation. Thank you very much, and we will move on to our legislative conversations. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to kick off our legislative discussion with Bill Number 93-23. That is a county executive bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor. This is pensions, participation, transferred service. I'm not going to continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me are Ann Bedawski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, Stephen Thro from the Budget Office, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. So just real briefly, high-level overview, Bill 93-23 makes some changes to our pension laws. It allows participants in the fire service and police service plans that are hired after a certain date to purchase service credit for prior participation in other plans, in other jurisdictions. It adds employees of the resilience authority of Annapolis and Anorundal County as participants in the county's employees' retirement plan, adds employees in certain job classifications as participants in the fire service plan, and it allows participants in the fire and police service plans who terminate employ, who terminate their employment for less than 12 months to return and participate in the plan under certain conditions regarding the calculation and repayment of contributions to re-enter the plan. And I'm going to turn it over now to Ann Bedawski to give a more detailed explanation.
Good morning, Ann Bedawski, Personnel Officer. And we tried to make this, I'll try and start with the most simple and go to the more complex. So in the employees' plan, there are three actions we are trying to attempt to do in this bill. The first one adds the resilience authority as an employer to allow future employees to participate in the pension plan. We have done this for other similar employers, like the Economic Development Corporation and others, and so this is similar in that action. Second thing we try and do in the employees' plan is to allow, well, let me do the other easier one, which is to add the classifications of firefighter, paramedic, firefighter lieutenant, paramedic, and firefighter captain, paramedic, to the code. All these classifications were created last year through negotiations in their pay scale, where we made a paramedic pay scale that was included in the pay bill. So it's in, but those, now that they're classifications, they need to be outlined in the code. So that's all we're doing, is adding those. It's kind of a cleanup, if you will. The third thing we're attempting to do in the employees' retirement plan is to allow an employee who is eligible for an early retirement at the time they separate, which means they're age 50 with at least 20 years of service. Currently, if they do that, they have a, an reduction in their benefit. It's called an early retirement, and based on whether you're closer to age 60 or, or closer to 30 years, that reduction can vary. Our law currently requires them to take that early retirement when they separate. What we are asking is to allow them to choose to hold, not retire, and defer that until they turn the normal retirement age of 60. It would be an unreduced benefit, but it would still be based on the number of years that they earned. Okay? Currently, they can't do that, and so this would allow them that choice. Moving to the police and fire plans. There are two major provisions that we're looking to do, both of which, oh, let me back up, I'm sorry, back to the employees' plan. The last thing we're trying to do that came out of negotiations with one of the APSME groups was to remove language that permitted an employee who was over the age of 60 and who was injured on the job to apply for disability retirement. Currently, the law says if you've already 60 and you get hurt, you can, and you're therefore abnormal retirement age, we cannot consider your disability claim. So this would allow that to happen. And so we're stripping language that will allow them, if they're still here, over 60, they get injured on the job, and they want to file a claim for disability retirement, they can do so. Now moving on to police and fire. The easier of the two is the redeposit bill, and I think Councilwoman Fiedler, you may recall this conversation we had. This is for an employee in the police and fire plan who leave us, terminate, go to another place of employment, and return within 12 months. The law currently states for police and fire, you have to, you vest in your plan at 20 years. If you leave us before you have 20 years, we must return your accumulated contributions to you, by law, when you leave, which means you lose your years of service here, whether it's six months or six years, because you take, we pay you out for what you paid into the system, and you don't, no longer have a benefit here. We have had several occasions, probably just on two hands, not a lot, it doesn't happen frequently, that they have left, maybe not as greener in other pastures, and so they come back home. And they would like the opportunity to redeposit that money and bring, therefore, bring their service back and not start at ground zero. And so this bill, this provision would allow them to do that, that if they come and go within 12 months, they would have, they could redeposit what we paid them out and reestablish where they were in year six or year five. We have allowed for a 10-year look-back window for this. We were trying to capture who we thought were the main characters. I think that we would be open to opening that up further, but the bottom line is that we would do a calculation to decide, to, to calculate what that redeposit looks like, because it is now several years later, and so interest must accrue, because their interest, if their money was here, would be earning interest. So we would have to use our actuary to calculate what that is. But we would offer them the opportunity to do that. They could make that repayment, that redeposit, in a lump sum. They could make it in a partial lump sum, and then take the rest in bi-weekly payroll deductions, or they can take the whole thing in bi-weekly payroll deductions over a set period of years. That was the easier one. I'm seeing nodding heads, which is a good sign. The more complicated one, transfer service, or purchase of service, is really what it is. The Police Department is very interested in this as a recruitment tool for lateral police and firefighters, or paramedics maybe from another jurisdiction, to allow them to bring service to the county when they are hired. We do lateral hirings for police several times during the year, just like we do for new entry. They kind of run parallel. So we tend to have a certain number every year. And the code does not provide them to be able, police or fire, to be able to bring any service with them. This was initially started under Title 37, which is state code, state law that dictated that they could no longer do this. There was a time period 20-plus years ago that they could. The state then changed it to say you could not. And at some point in the past 20 years, they have said, yeah, if local jurisdictions want to do it, they can. You can define how you want to do that. This county has held strong not to permit that until this time period. So it was part of our negotiations last year with police and fire to look to find a cost-neutral to the plan, meaning our fiduciary responsibility of the pension plan, to find a way to do this. So we worked with our actuary, we looked to see what other jurisdictions were doing. We asked our actuary to come up, look at different scenarios based on what we saw others doing. There are a couple of jurisdictions that do a very complicated full-cost purchase for this, and others who do more simple calculations. We erred on the side of a more simpler calculation and asked our actuary to look at four different scenarios. Using the employee contribution rate of 7.25, we had them look at a 1, 2, 3, and 4 times that as the multiplier. So what we were proposing was to allow a lateral employee to bring up to five years of service from their previous employer here in Maryland. We take your salary at your date of hire. We take the number of years that you were bringing with you, and then we would use that multiplier. We landed at three times your employee contribution rate, which is 21.75%, and that would be your cost to bring your service here, because you're only bringing the employee contributions, not the employer's share of what the employer had been bringing in to calculate what that future benefit is. So that was our proposal, to allow them to do this up to five years. Most of the other jurisdictions, surrounding jurisdictions, do limit the number of years. Some do only three, which is similar to our military credit. We only allow 36 months. We went with the up to five. And so that is what we proposed. I will happily try and answer any question that you have.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Bedawski. That was a good explanation. I appreciate it. It was good the way you broke it down in pieces. I'm going to go back to the beginning, and then we can kind of get through. So on the deferring of the early retirement versus the option to take full retirement later, it strikes me similar to social security. You can grab it at 62, or you can push off the 70. I get it. It seems like the sort of delta is lower payment, longer term, versus higher payment, shorter term, potentially. What, if any, analysis have you all done on the costs of that? How many people you think are going to opt to defer, take it later? And then what does that do in terms of the pension and sort of the overall health of the system?
Thank you for your question. We have not done a deep dive into a cost differential on that. I will just share with you that we really had 24 people go out on early retirement. So it is not highly used. Most people, maybe if they're approaching it, would rather stay, keep working till 60, and just take the unreduced benefit. So it is not a, a high number of people where we would do that. But
Well, it's not high now, but it could be higher later. If now, all of a sudden, I get to 50, and I go, yeah, I can retire at 50, I can go work somewhere else, I can kick off my benefit, I can do 10 years in, let's say, the University of Maryland Police or something, grab another pension over there, and I didn't have to take my county pension, and now I can get the max out, because I didn't hit 60. So I think that, these guys are smart. They're really smart about the way they do this, like, and I work with some of them in divorce world. They're all really smart about it. So I just say that
They know how to work a system.
Yeah. They know every in and out, and I don't blame them. I would, too, if it's my money, I respect it. But I'm saying, I think that's the kind of analysis we have to be doing, too, because though we can say, nobody's using it now, they're going to use it.
That is true, but it, unlike social security, when you wait, their benefit goes up. That is not the case here. It's just an unreduced benefit. So it is not as if, it doesn't grow. So instead of taking, I don't, I don't even, even know the numbers now, but it would just be calculated, it, it is a lower benefit. It doesn't exponentially grow with age, unlike social security.
Yeah, I, maybe that was a bad comparison.
Right.
But your point that I'm trying to latch into is, if my benefit's, let's just say, three grand a month, I'm making fake numbers, that's not right. And your reduced benefit, to grab it at 50, say the early retirement is 2250 or something, you take a 750 hit. The benefit grows, even though it didn't really grow, it's just not reduced.
Correct.
And so if you look at that over a time horizon, and you say, okay, I'm going to take this at 50, actuarial says you're going to live 37 years, so now you're going to die at 87, you're going to get this, what is that 2250 versus the other? I think we need that number, just for me on that one piece, because I'd be curious about that.
We can, we can do a couple of examples for you. Sure.
I have more, but I'll, that was a lot on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would assume that all of this has been discussed and agreed upon with bargaining units.
Discussed, yes.
Okay. I just, I want to say, I know we were making eye contact while you were discussing, I'm very excited to see 54201. There's been a lot of emotional conversation around this section of the code. I look forward to hearing from members of the public, but just really want to thank you for pointing that out.
Sure. We have discussed this, I think, the, I provided to the Auditor's Office the two-side letters where we had discussed about the approach to do this, and that once we had sort of found a cost-neutral piece, that we would work with the Office of Law, draft legislation. So we have talked to both party, of both unions about this. There are pieces that, and I'm sure you have a copy of the Pension Oversight Commission's position, that they don't necessarily agree with. I think that, as it relates to the redeposit piece, that is why, while the current version of the legislation suggests a 10-year look-back window, I think that is a place where we would consider offering an amendment that would just allow it retroactivity to anybody who is still here, working, who that was, who fell into those situations, and they could get a calculation done and make that decision themselves. So I think that is something we're interested in doing. Also, in my conversations with the fire union, I think we just, it was probably an oversight on our part, just to allow both the combination of a lump sum and a bi-weekly pay. So I think there's, we prefer an amendment that will allow that, because I don't think it was clear. We did allow it for transfers, but not for redeposits, and that was just an oversight.
Okay.
On the FOP side of this, I think we have different definitions of cost-neutral. You know, I think the administration's position is that we need to look at what is sustainable and fiduciarily responsible for the pension fund itself, and because there are no employer contributions coming with these employee contributions, that it's why we felt the three times the employee contribution rate, to be honest, right? We found something that was not overly burdensome to one party or the other. That being said, I know that they don't agree with that number. I also think that, at this point, because we want to use it as a recruitment tool, we'd like it to be prospective only and not for laterals that have already joined us. But I welcome feedback on that, and I, I know that that's a point of contention that we have with them, just a difference of opinion.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to come back to that, but the next thing on my list was the disability after 60.
Sure.
So, the rationale from the county's perspective, historically, you said has been, if you're over 60 and you're injured on the job, you take disability, you don't take retirement. Why?
It's actually the opposite.
Oh, the opposite, okay. So, you don't get disability, you get the retirement.
Correct.
Why is that? Is the disability payment higher?
It's just how the law was written, and so, if you hit normal retirement age, which is age 60, you couldn't be considered for disability retirement. If you were eligible to retire, you were encouraged just to do that.
Is the disability retirement more generous than the regular retirement?
It depends on your years of service, to be truthful.
Okay.
But, but, yes. If you are injured on the job and you are permanently disabled from doing your job and a doctor agrees to that and it is approved, then the, it is a 66 and 2/3 tax-free benefit. So, yes, it is a more generous benefit.
I see.
But we, we don't have many employees who fit that. We did have one several years ago, and it was unfortunate, but the, you know, we couldn't even consider the disability because she was age 60. We didn't even look at the injury or the claim itself.
Okay.
And so, there is, other plans do permit this, and so, we were trying to allow the employees' plan to have this as well.
Other plans in the county?
Yes.
Okay. And so, with that, is 60 the right age?
Right now, because that is our defined normal retirement age.
Okay.
So, unless we made a change to that.
Tracking. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. Last question, because my phone immediately went off. Just for clarification, the entire bill is prospective?
The redeposit portion is not.
Okay.
We currently, as written, has a 10-year look-back, but the transfer is prospective.
Great.
As written.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay. Coming to this purchase of service. So, I heard you talk about the sort of balancing you're trying to do between the employer and the employee contributions because I agree, that's, that's a big piece, right? What is the normal employer versus employee contribution? What would that be in the county? Like, if I come in, I'm starting off as a police officer, what's the percentage that's kicked in from the county versus the employee?
I may have to defer this to Stephen, but the employee contribution for police and fire right now is 7.25.
From each of you?
From, no, 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 just from the employee.
Right.
Their contribution bi-weekly is 7.25% of their salary.
And what's the county as the employer putting in?
I don't know it by individual, but on a generalized basis, on a, by, it's part of our contribution, Stephen, it is a percentage of payroll. And for police, it's about 54% of payroll.
Yeah, so, Stephen from Budget Office. So, it gets a little convoluted because we have past service that we're still making up for. Normal, if you look at the actuarial analysis that we've done here, it's roughly 30%, I would say, for a normal contribution rate. So, the county's putting in roughly 30%. We still have some past service liability that we're still trying to make up for. So, rough numbers, county's putting in about 30%. Employee, as Ms. Podolsky said, is about seven and a quarter currently. And we are the lowest jurisdiction from an employee contribution rate, I think, for every one of our plans.
Okay, that's, and so, have you, if you looked at other jurisdictions to know what their kick-in is for the employee?
Yes, we have.
And what is that?
You want to look at the police plan specifically?
I don't want to target them necessarily. I don't want to get a lot of emails that are going to say, you're against us or something. But I'm just looking generally. I want to understand kind of the landscape.
So, I have that, I'm sure. I know Kelly has it up as well, but just going down the list of the jurisdictions we've compared to.
Sure.
Where the police plan, Anarone County is 7 and 1/4.
Okay.
Baltimore City's 10%, Baltimore County's 10%, Frederick County's 9%, Howard County's 11.6%, Prince George's County is 9%.
Okay. So, we're significantly lower.
Significantly lower.
Okay. And then, so to, I don't see anybody else. So, to follow up on this, so if I'm doing the math correctly, and you can clearly tell me if I'm wrong, 37.25% of what someone makes is the total amount that's being kicked in. It's split between some percentage of employees, some percentage of employer. But that is the amount that's going into the pension plan to try to make the pension plan solvent. Is that fair?
I think roughly right, yes.
Okay. And we're coming back and we're saying that the number that the kick-in is going to be calculated on is 21%? Right. So, we're taking a 15, almost 16% hit in terms of solvency because there's money that's not going in that's going to end up being paid out in some form or fashion because you didn't just come up with the 30% and the 7.25% kind of pulling numbers out of thin air, right? So, the only people who make that up are the taxpayers in some form or fashion. It's either going to be a greater kick-in to pension or we're going to have unfunded liabilities, whatever. What is the positioning at the negotiating table? And I'm sure I'll hear from FOP on this and Fire and others, but what is the positioning of the admin versus what you've heard from the bargaining units when you're at the table on why that other 16% or 15%, whatever that number is, should not be made up by the person who's coming in, who's lateraling in and transferring?
I think it's just that definition of what, that cost-neutral piece, they, there's not a clear definition. We haven't talked about the specifics at the table.
So, how does, how does anyone not see the total cost being put in as being cost-neutral? I don't understand that. I can't follow that argument at all. So, maybe somebody else will send me that. I'm sure I'll get a very detailed email or letter. But I, if you haven't heard it, that's what I'm trying to dig into is I want to hear what they're saying to you is this is why that's not a cost-neutral number, that 37%. It's a high number, no question, but it seems to be a cost-neutral number. Is that the admin's position probably if we were to say, what's a real number, 37.25? I'm going to put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to understand.
Stephen, I'll let you take that.
Stephen again from Budget. Every definition I've ever had of cost neutrality, when we were looking at new programs or new budget initiatives, is there's no cost to the tax base.
Right.
No cost to the taxpayers, so.
That's not this.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay. Good. Then we're all agreed. The question about the five years, so you said that they can bring in up to five years. So, we're going to eat 15 or 16% for up to five years. Other jurisdictions, you said, are doing three. How did we land on five?
I landed on five by looking at the past year and a half or maybe two full years of the number of laterals that came over and the amount of service that they had. And the reason why we know what service they have is because of the years of experience that they have. We placed them on a step that's equivalent to that. So, if you come in with two years, two full years of service, we may put you in at a step three when you join us, right? So, that's how we knew. And the average number of years that that group had was 4.26.
Okay, got it.
So.
Makes sense. Do we have an estimate of what the cost is for the taxpayers to absorb that 15% hit over the average of 4 point however many years? Is that in the fiscal note?
Not directly, I don't think.
The fiscal note lays out a couple of examples. So, obviously, the actual fiscal impact is going to determine by how many participants come in and how many years of service they bring in.
Okay.
So, rough analysis in here, I know we had numbers for how many transfers we had. We had 35 lateral transfers for the police department in the last 16 months or something along those lines.
Okay.
So, you can, again, salary, number of years of service, age, all of those things are going to play into the actual fiscal impact there. If you look at the breakdown of those four examples that are provided in the fiscal note, it's roughly $84,000 to the county side, $286,000 to the employee side to bring that over.
Per employee?
No, those are for the total for the four.
That's the aggregate cost.
For the four, only for those four employees.
Okay.
So, you're looking at rough numbers, roughly right here again, about $20,000 per employee for the county share that this fiscal, that this legislation proposes.
Mm-hmm.
And a roughly, rough numbers here, $70,000, $75,000-ish for the employee share. So, it's about a 75, 25 split as it currently sits, rough numbers. So, depending on how many employees you've got, 35 employees to the county share, at $20,000, it's $700-ish thousand dollars to the county.
Yeah.
Over the lifespan of that pension benefit.
Yeah, and that's 16 months. I mean, that's 35 and 16 months. So, if you look at this over the time that we're doing this, we're building in about a million-dollar-a-year expense. That's, I would say, I'm probably a little high, but.
This is, those numbers are only reflecting transfers from the police service. Don't forget, this bill also impacts the fire service, which I don't have numbers on how many laterals we've hired from the fire service.
Why not?
We, they don't do it that very often. They were four, the last laterals were in 2019, there were only four.
It's like, somebody up there should know how many laterals we brought in.
Okay. Yeah. So, and if this also was to provoke more lateral transfers?
As a recruitment tool.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is another hefty price tag, is what it looks like, similar to the tax bill that we just passed, that you all told us was going to cost $2 million a year, which we understood, and that's why we voted for it. But this looks like this is maybe at least another million. All right. It's good information. Thank you.
Thank you. So, my colleagues asked the bulk of my questions and beyond, and I appreciate the dialogue today. I did hear, I think, from the table that possibly the admin is bringing a couple of amendments. If, it would be nice to know what those might be as the council may be interested in doing some of their own amendments. I haven't, I haven't heard that. I'm just, so that we're not duplicating work. So, hopefully, we can work together on that.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. Are we ready to move on to our next bill? We're going to move on to Bill Number 94-23. This is Ms. Fiedler's bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this bill is basically a cleanup to Bill 1523 that we did earlier this year. As a reminder, that language in 1523 was carefully crafted so that it only applied to one parcel in the county. Bill 9423 adds that that language applies to an adjacent property if under the same ownership of a government or nonprofit entity, volunteer entity that supports the county in public service. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just the, oh, oh, I was thinking, oh. Do you have any comments on this bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration with me at the table, or Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I would just reiterate that we generally would prefer that these types of bills go through the comprehensive zoning process.
But you support the outcome of this legislation?
The ultimate outcome, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rodman.
Thank you. Are you able to tell us which parcel we're talking or what the property is?
Yes, so this is the Early Heights Volunteer Fire Company.
Got it.
And just for matter of public record, I did reach out to the community and have met with them in the past on, this is a very long, there's a very long history here, so.
Seeing no further questions, we're going to move on to Bill Number 1-24. This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So, this bill makes some modifications to our county code regarding potentially dangerous, dangerous, and vicious animals. It modifies some of the criteria for determining an animal as potentially dangerous, dangerous or vicious. It establishes the burden of proof for each type of case and for appeals of those orders. It also modifies notice requirements involving cruelty to an animal and requires an owner to pay for costs of care for animals seized or surrendered and establish notice requirements in those situations. So, we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. How much is animal care and control spending annually right now on animals that are seized and being held?
See if I have, I don't have that information right here, but I can get it to you.
I would appreciate that. Just thought of it off the top of my head, so I apologize for not getting that question to you sooner.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, and perhaps it's somewhere in code and I just wasn't able to find it yet, is there a definition for vicious?
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. It's not defined, but the criteria set forth in the language that's in the bill under 124402D. So, that requires that the, that the agency found that they cannot be maintained safely without threatening members of the public, and then list those certain things that that animal has to do in order to be found vicious, either killing or inflicting severe injury. And then, the list goes on through four criteria that have to be found in order to find that animal to be vicious.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you could tell us a little bit about the origin of this bill? I'm assuming this came from, or I believe it came from the commission.
Yes, some of the, some of these, the components of this legislation came from the Animal Matters Commission. Some of it came from the Animal Welfare Commission. The burden of proof provisions came from the Animal Matters Commission. The cost of care came from the Animal Welfare Commission. Some of the requirements regarding hearings and appeals came from discussions with the members of the administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we've, we've had exposure to this through constituents who have had these determinations, and they reach out to us, and there have been things in the newspaper, and there have been people who are upset with the county exec and upset with us about this. And I understand this is a highly sensitive issue. I guess my question would be, has there been any outreach to any of the people who have been through the system to see if maybe this alleviates some of the concerns and feedback that they've had with how they felt the system might not have treated them fairly? Like, I've got some constituents off the top of my head that I'm going to share this with, who I know have reached out to me, but I just didn't know if you've already done that or if you've heard it through any of the commissions that have put this, you know, these suggestions forward.
Certainly. So, we've had conversations with constituents who have reached out to the administration in the past year or so and told them that we would be bringing forth this legislation.
May I just follow up?
Of course.
Thank you. Did they seem positive toward this? Did they feel this was a good step? I like you defining the sort of growing levels of proof that are required for each of the determinations and kind of linking that back to a legal standard, which is helpful. But I guess, was that something that they, or maybe even their attorneys, said, this is a good step for us?
I, I would say that the conversations I saw, they were encouraged by that. Additionally, there's provisions in here for appealing the orders after a year. And at that point, the burden of proof is on the, the owner of the animal to go back and reconsider an order. And that was something that they and the Animal Matters Commission both supported.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm having trouble finding the exact page. I apologize. But I remember when I was reviewing this yesterday, there was a section, I believe it was regarding the appeal process, there was a time limit where it mentioned if the animal had been declared, I believe it was vicious, within the past 12 months. I was curious as to why that particular time period was picked versus no time period at all or a longer one or a shorter one. And I apologize for not, I was trying to find it in my notes on my phone.
Yeah. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I think it's on page three of the bill and middle of the page, the reconsideration section.
Yes, thank you.
So, there's actually, that's a little bit different than an appeal. So, if a dog is designated potentially dangerous, dangerous or vicious, they have the right to appeal that finding to the Board of Appeals and that's within thirty days and that's set forth in the code elsewhere. This actually allows for the reconsideration of a potentially dangerous or dangerous order after it's already been imposed and in place and either appealed or not appealed, but it allows the owner to come back within, within a twelve-month period to ask for certain conditions to be reconsidered because if an animal is found potentially dangerous or dangerous, there's, there's an order that's issued and then it requires them to, you know, for example, maybe muzzle the dog, put up fencing, put up signage, you know, things of that nature. And we've had requests from owners in the past, you know, can, you know, can the muzzle requirement be taken away? And there's no avenue to do that right now in the code. So, this would actually allow an owner to come in after their animal has been under an order for at least twelve months and then ask for reconsideration of the, of those certain conditions before the agency.
I was just curious what, why the twelve months was.
I think that was actually something that was, and I mix up the commission, so I apologize, I wouldn't know which commission it came from, but I think it came from one of the commissions asking for a certain timeframe. I think that we did the no more than, than once in twelve-month period because we didn't want to open the door to, you know, ask for reconsideration every couple of months on an order, you know, that, and it had to be a place for a certain amount of time too. So, you know, after the animal's been under that order for twelve months and you could ask for that, but you can't just keep coming back to ask for reconsideration. You know, something has to change in the circumstances in order for that, in order for those conditions to be changed. And so, I think twelve months is kind of, you know, just a timeframe that they looked at to, you know, where you might have a change in circumstance where you could say, you know, I don't need to have the muzzle or the signage or something like that anymore.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any further questions. Are we ready to move on to our next bill? Sounds like it, great. We're looking at bill two dash twenty-four, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Use of Self-Storage. All right, this is, this is Mrs. Pickard's bill. This is relatively straightforward, one of those looking for flexibility with our business In a W one district, a self-storage facility located on a principal arterial road may allow the outside storage of vehicles at the side or rear of the lot as an accessory used with screening that complies with the landscape manual. I did work with the administration on drafting this bill, so it's pretty straightforward to me. Happy to answer any questions or you can ask about the administration. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration, Lynn Miller from Office of Planning and Zoning and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I want to thank the sponsor as always for working with the administration on drafting this bill and we're fine with it and happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Rodman?
Thank you. I really was just curious, how is this different from the status quo? Like, are they not, are vehicles not allowed or is the screening not required or is it?
I think if memory serves from the drafting of this bill, and Mr. Bennett might help me out, I believe the current code only allows them in the rear or no? Or indoor?
Yeah, I, I think the main thing that the sponsor was trying to change or one of them was that any outside storage for a self-storage facility is supposed to be in the rear and this would allow it to also be on the side of the property, but only on facilities that are located on a principal arterial.
I appreciate the help. We did work on some language and making sure it was all copacetic, so I appreciate the support from the administration. We can move on to bill number three dash twenty-four, Maritime Districts. Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This bill came out of discussion with property, a property owner in the fifth district, but then just following generally the conversations taking place in preparation for regions to come to the council. And just out of curiosity, I went into the marina section of our code and noticed that there's a rather large discrepancy between MA one and MA two. An MA one marina district is owned and operated by the community association. Only members of that community association who live in that community can be an MA one marina, including riparian rights. Then you jump to MA two and a whole lot of commercial activity can take place on an MA two, which may be appropriate in some circumstances, but there are marinas in existence that may be operating as non-conforming uses who don't have the acreage to be able to do any of the commercial uses or most of the commercial uses, but they still ha, have in operation currently a very small, limited amount of marina commercial use, like slip rentals, just slip rentals. Because they fit, don't fit into MA one, they are looking at MA two, but that's a huge jump. So, I was trying to find a very carved out, very specific new zone that would be workable for these neighborhood marinas that are small in, the parcels are small in size, there's someone living on the residence or on the property who is responsible for taking care of the marina and one other primary residence. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but this really was to try to fill that gap between MA one and MA two.
Thank you, just the administration have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration, Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. I want to thank the sponsor for working with us on the drafting of this bill. I do know there were some newer sections that we feel there could be a little bit of clarity on, so I'll turn it over to Lynn to just briefly talk about that.
Again, and thank you to the sponsor for working with our office on this bill. We, we understand the intent and we were supportive of it. There's a few things that are, that we might be interested in discussing an amendment with the sponsor if you're able to the idea. One is under eighteen seven one oh two MA one B where you've sort of offered a general description of what the neighborhood marina district is, but then you added a statement that it's appropriate for mapping on properties comprising three acres or less. We don't know, I don't know where the three acre criteria came from, but we typically don't, you know, when we're mapping a zoning district, we don't put limitations on the size of the zone. I mean, that's typically done either through bulk regs if you're talking about subdivision or sometimes as a conditional or special exception use requirement. But it's just, it kind of sticks out to us because there's nowhere else in the code where we sort of limit how a zone can be mapped by its size, if you know what I'm saying. And even beyond that, the language is, you know, I'm not sure how we would interpret language that says it's appropriate for mapping. Like, usually the code says it shall be or it shall not be. So, it's just, the language is a little awkward and that's something maybe we can talk to you about. I'm not even sure that that's needed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm absolutely open to discussing it. The feedback from some in the industry, I'm not, as I've said in talking about this before, I think it was this bill, I'm, I'm not a boat owner, I don't go out on boats a whole lot, but just getting the feedback, because we are going through a lot of changes in the code, I was trying to really address the exact concern and it is these very small marinas who do not have a lot of acreage that exist within a neighborhood. But if you would like to discuss further to make the language flow better, but still have the same outcome, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great. There's just a couple more. One relates to the, the list of uses allowed under eighteen seventeen one oh seven. So, you have the dwellings that are used for a caretaker and that's common in, in most of our non-residential districts, we allow that. Then it's also added a separate line item for one dwelling unit. So, that, again, that kind of just sticks out as a little bit of an anomaly to us because in our other non-residential districts, we allow a caretaker dwelling, but we don't allow in addition to that one additional dwelling. So, this is sort of the only zoning district where that, that would be occurring. So, that, you know, we weren't really, that just sort of stuck out to us. It's a little different and we weren't sure why, again, if it's going to be a small neighborhood marina with, with limited uses, we weren't sure why it would need to have allowances for a caretaker residence plus another residence. So, you know, that's something that we could talk about or.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it was a, I have to go back through my notes, but a lot of the conversation was around, do we allow, and do we try to put an ADU here? Do we not, because they are in a neighborhood that most, almost all of the properties would be able to have an ADU. So, yes, all of that's to say, yes, I'm happy to discuss. We were trying to just address where these properties are located and the, the community around them.
Okay, great. And then the last one was the conditional use requirements that were added for the caretaker residence and I, I think that this is, I wasn't sure if you were aware, but really the way the bill's constructed, the three of, three of the four, I don't, I don't think are needed because they're either covered in the definition or they're not really, they're not, like the fourth one, there may be no more than two dwelling units of any type. Because, because you've already limited this type of marina to no more than fifteen boat slips, it could never have more than two fifty. So, if you go to the use chart, that would necessarily limit it to one caretaker and even if you keep the one additional dwelling, you could never have more than two. It's not really possible. So, that and the first and the third conditions in that section are covered in the bill already. And I wasn't sure if you were aware of that, but just pointing that out, it's, you know, it's, it's really kind of a redundant section because it's covered. The only, the only thing that's not covered elsewhere is the limitation to one half an acre if you're going to have a dwelling on the property.
Yes, I do know that there was some redundancy. I think that there was an interest when you're talking about these types of parcels, and I know we've done it in previous legislation where the community just feels like they, even though it's redundant for us who read the code every day, feel reassured when it, the redundancy is in another section of the code, so when they're looking at it, it's very clear. But I'm happy to massage this a little more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? No, so that is the last bit of legislation for today, but I am going to take a moment, oh, Ms. Rodman. I am, I am going to take a moment to recognize Mr. Matt Bennett with a citation this morning. This is his last day representing this council. Mr. Bennett, you have been the consummate professional and an amazing drafter of legislation and a huge support to this council with your time here. We wish you much success and happiness in your new role and I will walk down and give you this, this citation so I can fully embarrass you today. in small groups to revise and update and modernize our rules of procedure. That was his last act that he helped pull together in August and it has been brought forward. This council will be taking up those revisions in the, in the coming month, but I want to thank him for all of his hard work again. Anybody else have any other business to bring before the council? No? This work session is again on Tuesday, January sixteenth, when the council resumes for our legislative session at seven PM. Did I get that right? We have a holiday on Monday, everybody.